So what is today December first? All rise to order, the fledgeable in December first.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
So sure that everybody know what.
The agenda.
Oh, yeah, so just for the good of the. For the good of the order and procedurally, since there are only three board members here this evening. You do have a quorum, three members as the quorum, but under the second class township code, it also takes three affirmative votes. To take any action, so on each voting action tonight. If there is a two to one, the result is that the motion does not pass, so it takes three zero to pass it.
Thank you. Alright, so item three is the consent agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion of consent agenda?
Any discussion? Any public discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, now on to board motions, presentations and resolutions. Item A is the twenty twenty six budget.
Yeah, so I'll start you off. Everything, everything is aligned to what you've discussed in the past, there should be no surprises. There are, there are three things that I want to pull out that we haven't talked about yet. There are numerous small adjustments, so by small adjustments, I mean just mean. You know, we, we furthered an assumption, improved assumptions, we got more data. They moved things, moved things small, not large, I don't know that you want me to go through those, I can if you want. But none of them. Just the numbers that we put in change because we learn more, we made better choices to do the way we started. I do have one, one change to the capital plan that we put. We put more money in, in facilities because internally at the staff side. We think you should have cameras at the garage, you have cameras in all your own buildings. And so we put a small amount of money in there for cameras at the garage, but that's the only substantive change. And then some of that was even cost neutral because we took a little bit of the money out of a. A B O S project, which is just sort of undedicated thing. So that's a, that's a substantive change, but very small, only, I think.
Is there a plan to get an updated time card machine?
Well, that's all part of the.
That's all part of it.
Okay, then there are, there are three that came to us last week. Including sizable ones that came after we even published the, this, this budget. One is the pension, the M M O. So the M M O, the actuary stem is an updated M M O. It increased by a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. So, yeah, so I'll just talk about the three things generally, one, the pension, we had an updated M M O. Two, the sewer authority, they don't do their budget until Wednesday. So we didn't even get their grant budget until, until probably Tuesday of last week. So that, that had some expenses in it that were beyond our expect, our initial expectation. And then we had some issues, we, we thought the auditor was going to be able to complete the audit in a timely manner, the audit auditor has indicated they. He can't, or it can't. So we have another, which we'll talk about later, we have another auditor lined up to proceed. The, the budget that I'm going to put before, I'm going to ask for three changes. We'll have about eight grand more in audit, just to prepare for the uncertainty of it. So those are the three, the, the three changes, I do want to get a little granular with the three because they're not insignificant. So as soon as the next slide is okay. The M M O, so about a hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars. A hundred and eight thousand plus or minus in the police M M O. And then forty, forty nine thousand plus or minus in the non-uniform M M O. So, don't like this, like in my world, that's why they do the M M O in September. It's, it's tied to the timing of. You, of, they're looking at snapshots and the order is just backwards, they gotta. They gotta be able to look at this, they gotta have this kind of decision in June, so that it's reflected in the M M O. I can't solve it now, I can just try to work with it to prevent it from happening next time. But that's one change, it represents, it would manifest itself as twenty five thousand. In the executive line item. A hundred and eight thousand, a hundred and nine thousand in the police pension line item. And then we put the balance in the, in the sewer, we just tried to distribute the, kind of sort of match that. The police one was easy, that's a hundred percent in the police line item, the other two, we just tried to match it best we could.
Wait, that doesn't make sense, you said executive, ladies, so the hundred and eighty.
In sewer.
And then so.
Twenty two.
Where's the, where's the non-uniform? Is it all?
Uh, the non-uniform one is sewer and executive.
And they will one fifty seven for all three.
Yes, lost your mind?
But it was just the. And then mode is one fifty seven.
Yeah, the M M O is. In closure, one point three.
And is it just because the stock market was down at the point they did this?
Shouldn't be, and, and because the stock market wasn't down when they did this. My gut would tell me that it's related to employment, you have two new employees, you have new employees. And it's a snapshot, and my gut tells me that it's a snapshot with. Not new, with not new employee, then all, you're adding two employees and now you have an actuarial loss. But we gotta get to the bottom, we're not going to get to this, this came Wednesday at two thirty, it's not something we're going to get to the bottom of now.
So if it's employees, then it's sort of a one-time catch-up thing, and it won't be this increase every year?
Probably, it's not a one-time catch-up, it's a, it's a smooth. But presumably it's smooth, so it's this amount every year, it won't go back to nine hundred next year. It'll stay at the high amount for some period of time. There are a lot of factors in the M M O to get to, to get to the answer is. Not something we can do between Wednesday and Monday.
I mean, we don't really have a choice either.
Don't have a choice.
Minimum municipal obligation.
And you're paying for it anyway, whether like even if they're long, you're paying for it anyway, you know, you're just paying in advance.
I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, that we need to figure out exactly what happened, why this happened, why it's so last minute, but at the end of the day, we have the choice, we have to.
Like, what I don't want is if it's wrong. Every year, and they keep going up and down, up and down.
Yeah, so, so we got, we got to figure that one out, we got to figure out what made them. What made them be off by a hundred and nine thousand dollars in two months? And maybe change some order, but we don't know what is causing this problem. Okay, the next one. Is the V F S A budget, you know, this isn't new, this is, this, we've been talking about this, how they, they haven't even met yet to approve this. They meet on Wednesday, so they don't even, they don't, you don't even get the draft of this until after you have finished yours. We didn't get their draft until Tuesday of last week. They're, they're sort of. They're sort of like, yeah, it's going to be a little bit more than last year, they're not, they didn't quantify it, that was the first time we had the number, so. I had some numbers in, I had escalators of, you know, five and a half percent, which is. You know, I was told to expect inflation, so I had a little bit more than inflation in there, so this is pushing upwards of eight. So it reflects. It reflects the difference, so about eighty one thousand in expense, in operational expenses. Now, they did, they give us, they, they refund money from the previous year, so they did give us a. An audited value for next year's refund, which is ninety five thousand dollars, so it's a, it's only a net of twenty. But you should capture it, so you, you will have to pay twenty grand more. They'll refund you about sixty.
So the ninety four thousand is money that didn't give us. For the operational surplus this year, they'll give it to us in twenty twenty six.
Yes. Yeah. And, and I had thirty five thousand in there because I'm keeping a, sort of a historical number, and it's, exceeds it, it's just. But now that we know that it's an actual audited value, that's to put in the actual audited value. So that's a net, a net of twenty, which you'll just absorb, remember you've got a structural, purposeful. Deficit next year because you saved up to spend it down, so you'll just spend it down by twenty grand more next year than. What I had told you two weeks ago.
And some of the last item, the very little discretion ability here on our part, because this is where we send all the affluent.
Yeah, and, and we are, you know, we are. You know, we're, we are trying to get them to be more attuned to our schedule, but you've been to all those meetings, you know, it's difficult, we go to the meetings, your chair goes to the meetings. We'll go to the meeting and we'll say this Wednesday, you know, that we. We should be have, they should be doing what they're doing Wednesday, they should be doing that in October. So that it's input to yours, not, not they're starting theirs after you've nearly finished yours. So, and we're working with Tridifer, trying to get that done. Good luck to us.
And then the capital million dollars, is that part of the three million we owe?
Yeah, it's part of the number that you owe them, and when we had, when, when, when the figuring out all the costs. There was, your thought was that initially you would just pay down, you would pay some of these costs from Fund sixty three. Then when you decided to borrow, you decided you would, hey, maybe we'll refund Fund sixty three. And the solution that we talked about at the E M A is just those initial projects that had always been intended to be paid by Fund sixty three. Will be paid by Fund sixty three, so you probably won't have to change the net amount from what you talked about previously.
And similar, but slightly unrelated, we did send that letter a few months ago, indicating, we're stating our claim that should anything happen to this. We're putting a bunch of money into this every year at this point now, that we do have a claim for the, you know, capital improvements of the facility. Like, we did send that, it's not that it's resolved, but we at least officially formally notified them of our position of that, so for now, it's kind of settled.
Yeah, kind of settled, Tridifer did the same, and then we're still working with. Other municipalities to make a similar statement. Okay, so this one's sort of like the other one, it's. It's a, it's doable, and there's not much that you can do about it, but. And then the third one's the littlest one. So auditor, we really have been pressing the auditor to try to get this to move faster. And auditor was frank with us in a way that we interpreted as the auditor is not in a position to do the twenty five audit in timely manner. You need another auditor. That'll be in it, that'll be a little bit of a discussion item later tonight, and then an action item for you in January. When you switched from your previous auditor to your current auditor, your current auditor was the lowest priced, priced alternative. So you paid less, almost a third less. And the expectation is you won't pay a third less next year, so. Little bit more cash in there, just I think eight or nine thousand more split between the sewer fund and the general fund.
And that's for the twenty twenty five?
Twenty twenty five.
The, the twenty four orders under.
Yes.
That will get done.
Well, yes, that, that's got a contract and an amount, and expectation is that we'll have that in January. Okay, so those are the only three substantive changes, all the other changes are. Small amounts to improve predictions, and I can talk about them if you want, but the three that I just identified. Are new to you, we hadn't talked about them, any amounts in that one significant thing. The, the net effect is, on the general fund, you would had a structural surplus. Approaching the high three hundreds. And when you net all this in, it'll just be a structural surplus in the low two hundreds. So it all. That, that's the, the surplus is absorbing the difference. In sewer funds, it's a structural deficit that's absorbing, you have purposeful, you've over collected in. Twenty twenty five, so that you can under collect in twenty six. You'll just under collect by twenty thousand dollars more than originally anticipated. So other than that, I'll just respond to questions that you have for me about it.
This is our commission, I feel like that was still an open item, there's a hundred thousand dollars allocated in here, that covers, I think, the consultant that they had asked for. There's a couple of other general things they had, but I don't think that covers the American two fifty, asking that was what, thirty thousand or something like that, I forget that number.
Correct, it doesn't include that. So if, for it to include that, you all have to decide to do that. Make that motion tonight, make that happen, and then we decide where the, where they come from, we could, you could raise the mileage by. To one hundreds, you know, to account for it, you could further. Spend down that structural surplus that you have. And then there is a. You know, there, there's, there's also some, we have a miscellaneous line item that is un. Unencumbered at the moment.
What is it, like forty five thousand or something?
Yes.
Around, around that amount?
Yes.
So it's not too far off from this, like that would totally.
It would make it income, so, so it's, it's up to you, it's your money. You know, everything comes, everything is zero sum at this point, so it's just having one of zero sum.
I would be in favor of adding it, use the budget funding it, Sean is not here, but he texted me last night and said he was fair of it, not really worth a damn, because he's not here for the meeting. But yeah, personally, I'm okay with it.
Right, I'm, I'm not, I, I think we should do a nice. Party on July fourth, I, I don't see a plan, I don't see a, the thought going into it, I see a. Bunch of wish list, wish list items that showed up in the middle of our budget process, I'm not, not comfortable doing that, so.
And just the reality of the instruction that Andy provided you ten minutes ago. Means that that sort of settles it for the moment, it doesn't settle forever, but settles it for certain.
And I'm not going to withhold voting on the budget to, for, for that item, so.
The hats on July fourth, they're just not that important, right?
It is what it is.
Well, the, the banner, what was the?
Girl.
Girl.
So when you get to it. Presumably, it would be a motion to accept it as written in the packet with the three changes that I identified regarding. Pension, sewer, and auditor.
So what would a appropriate motion be?
Oh, my only background comment is you still have some leeway because you have up to twenty five percent changes. In major categories, so while. You saw some pretty big numbers within, for instance, the sewer budget. I think overall, I'm assuming that's under twenty five percent, most of those were. The big, big ones were sixteen percent for the largest number, the. The refund was bigger than twenty five percent, but that's not a major category in and of itself, so. I believe if, if staff agrees, everything you're hearing is within.
Yeah, that's, that's my view of it, you know, like sewer fund is the big nugget, that's all, all those expenses are a nugget. That's a four million dollars, a minor adjustment. And even, even the pension isn't approaching that amount.
So the motion, as, as Don suggests, could be to approve the budget as outlined in the packet. With the three changes referenced in.
And, and that's in item B, so in the way that we were proceeding with this. Is A is sort of the general discussion. And then B is the resolution, and you can just have to make those changes. At I O B, does that work, Andy?
Yes, but A, you're approving, you're approving the budget as stated in the packet with those changes that you just outlined, is that correct?
Sounds great, yeah.
So we are in behind.
So the, the first motion would be to approve the budget. As, as revised through the manager's PowerPoint, so.
Any comments? Any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes. So I'd say what, so people still have to do a budget resolution?
Yes.
So would be item B, that's we're moving on by the.
Yes.
Okay, and I am B is the budget resolution.
And it would be exactly as it's written, except the, the final budget would be as amended moments ago. Correct, Andy?
Yes, so you're, now you're looking at twenty twenty five twenty, correct?
Yes.
So the motion would be to approve the resolution, and the attached final budget will have the manager's revisions that you just discussed.
We want to move now.
So I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty, including the revisions as outlined by staff.
Second. Any comments? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion.
Item C, everything's sort of perfunctory and subjective, so item C, no changes from what was represented to you. You know, a month ago.
That's a resolution, yeah, we have to pass each one of these.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty one, setting the specific millages for each of the major categories.
Any comments?
And Don, none of that mileage changes in light of the revisions.
Andy, one other question, we have the library has that nineteen forty two, you know. Resolution that has a specific millage minimum that has to be allocated, are there any others that have actual legislative requirements that are minimum? And are we sure that we're meeting them, just as a general question?
Yeah, the only, the only item I'm aware of is, is the library.
And just to be clear, it wasn't legislative, it was referendum.
It was a, it was a voter referendum decades ago.
Sorry?
And we worked with the library, we, I think we all agree that. Although the assessments have changed over the years and the millages have changed over the years in the modern era. You've really left that alone for that very reason, because it was the will of the voters, so the adjustments have come. More on the earned income tax side, and the mileage has stayed roughly stat.
Yeah, so all the others have a reduction of around eleven percent. The libraries, they would think, when you add them all, they get a ten percent reduction.
We moved them, second, we discussed them, all, okay, any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next.
This is an administrative stuff that just lets us. This is the.
Fee schedule.
Uh, fee schedule, thanks, okay, very good. Fee schedules, it, nothing's changed except for sewer and trash, which is on page eighty, and that has the adjustments that we talked about. The only one that you might not have seen this way is the, the forty two fifty is the service charge for the second can. So it's presented as a fee, not as a percentage, but that's the thirty five percent, so.
Forty two fifty per quarter.
Per quarter, yes, so, so that, that, that's the thirty five percent, that's what you agreed to. There's probably only about fifteen or so right now that have that.
Twenty one.
Twenty one, so it's not a, it's not a huge amount of money, you could keep it at forty two, you could. Drop it to something lower if you want, your costs are, are around thirty six for this, you have a markup. One hundred percent of your cost is, the contract is about eighty percent of your cost, so. That's just a markup of the fee. At thirty six bucks, it would be a very slim markup, at forty two, it's a full markup.
Yeah, I think we discussed this at the last meeting, we were fine with the.
Okay, so that one's settled, you approve the, you approve the fee schedule, the, the trash and sewer, you only fees to change.
Do we need a motion?
Yes. Need a motion for the resolution.
Someone else want to do it this time?
No, you go ahead.
I, I will base it well, thanks. I will make a motion adopting resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty five, approving the township fee schedule.
One second. Any discussion? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. That's B, we're moving on to the, to the E.
Is, is what allows us to make payroll and then bring it to you after the fact, it's pretty standard, you've done this year, I think you've.
I'll make a motion adopting resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty two, appropriating funding to salaries, wages and benefits, uniformed and non-uniformed, discounted for employees.
Second. Any discussion? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I was already.
We need the next. Motion passes. Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to keep up to.
I know, I'm sorry, sorry.
That was E, so we're on to F.
Yeah, self-explanatory.
Holidays.
Holiday.
I make a motion. I make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty three. The resolution setting township holidays for twenty twenty six.
I'll second that.
Any comments? Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Here, which one that was, F, so on to G, resolution setting the board supervisor's meeting schedule.
I'll make a motion to protect the meeting schedule for twenty twenty six.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I think I said this every year, we've done this, I prefer to have two meetings a month.
I.
Go with the board.
I, you said that before, I actually do like having the one jammed meeting, even if it is a little longer, because I do feel like sometimes. There's not enough content to have multiple meetings in a month, so I like kind of having one bigger one.
Occasionally, we've had things where it was too far apart, or it seemed like it was too far apart. I think people are down.
And also, we're, we're adapting to it, so you're meeting more with the staff and auxiliary, in A D Cs than ever before. And we're using those to bring you things, so we're, we're shying away from the, you got one meeting and four hours to make it right, we're bringing things to you in lists. That I think facilitates the one meeting month. Hope it doesn't.
I see the, the store commission wants to move the meeting from the second Wednesday to the second Thursday, is there a conflict on the second Thursday of the month? Do we know?
Pretty great, he says, so this is brought by the, the store commission members themselves, they, they have some conflicts that would make it easier. Tonight, you were just setting the B O S meeting, in January, you'll set the A D C's meetings presumably. But I just want to bring that to your attention, because I know Sean's not available on Thursday, so who will be moved from Monday to Thursday, he wasn't available.
That was going to be my question.
And that's such a, it's a board decision nowadays, have to do to set these dates, so.
Fair.
Wanted to give you a runway on that one.
Yeah, I mean, it's a volunteer-run committee, so, you know, I, if they feel more comfortable on that night, I.
Somebody else will just have, there'll just be some kind of bear combination, yeah, okay.
We've made a motion.
I'll make a motion adopting the resolution setting board supervisor meeting schedule for twenty twenty six.
Second. Any discussion?
And just to be clear, you still will meet twice a month, January, October, December.
I want to meet twice a month in August.
Just for those assembled.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, exactly, any public comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. On to the, I think H, please in administration building.
I'm going to let John introduce the night, and then I'll, we'll introduce Martin, and then I'm going to let Martin drop him.
Sure, so it's very macro, the summer, we had the R F A board building feasibility studies. Going through a fairly rigorous project for, for review between staff and the board, we landed on. Kimmo, our, Kimmo is here tonight, so. He will walk you through a set of P V, of, of presentations here, showing the few options for what his firm has developed as. The likely paths for, for you to consider. This was the, the feasibility study, so this is sort of wrapping up all the deliverables that were. That we engaged in, in that study, the next phase would be going forward with design and engineering, so. There's not fancy pictures, there's layouts, there's general thoughts, bases. But this gets you to that next step, like makes us ready to actually design a building for you. So, Martin Kimmo is here, and Susan will run his PowerPoint.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it, being back with you all again. So, so we'll go through with the slides, it sounds like everybody's seen this in their package in PDF form. But I wanted to remind you quickly about. Why we sort of approach it the way we do and how it tends to be helpful, but if, if you don't mind going back to the, the two different changes. Um we started by focusing not on the stuff, but on what the mission of the project is to be successful, and we find that if we could, we have clarity when we start and we continue to go back to that. Um each time you take a step and make sure we're not going off mission, you tend not to go off mission. And usually when people off mission, it's a it's an expansive type of thing. Um and that has, you know, generally associated with heartache, so so we created a project mission statement, which I don't need to read for you, but it it is aspirational but practical. It's addressing the problems that you have, one of the key components to the mission is to have it be sized right. To have enough air in it to be able to absorb reasonable amounts of growth as best we're able to predict it to get. So why do we do that? One, we want to design a building ultimately that could be expandable. But two, a little more space now is infinitely less expensive, I mean not infinitely, substantially less expensive. And much less disruptive than it is to be tight in the next step and then have to go someday down the not-too-distant road to expand again. Um so so when we talk about the costs that are associated with that, that includes reasonable expansion for all departments. As was assessed, and I don't have details of that tonight, I mean, that's a spreadsheet we can take into with you at any any given time, but but much thought was done that, and we did also do size comparisons against like townships, we also like to do that based on population and also staff. Uh and sometimes Republic Works will do road miles and other things that are not pertinent to this, to just, you know, it's it has metrics beyond just our opinion, but it does have our informed opinion, having done a lot of this kind of work. In addition to that, though, when you go to the mission's grade, we have core values, what are the things that will make it more east town than some other township, and what will address some of the key factors that people feel are important, whether that's you know fiscal responsibilities, which I think we all will agree with. But um sustainability as it relates to the environment, but practical sustainability, things that you can easily design in that are integral as opposed to things that just get added on. Um flexibility, um enough not just air to grow, but also to absorb technology, to absorb the things that, you know, we can't predict, but we we know changes of what uh always are, so you'll see the core values there, we've tried to stay true to those in our assessment, so now if you can go next, that would be great. Uh next one, go ahead. So then um so basically what you're looking at there is a color rendition of what um is here today, so on the far right labeled existing. Uh we're in the front, you know, third of that building on the right, that's the original, uh exit carriage barn is what I call it. Billtop House, dead center, you have the various parking components, and then obviously a lot of the downhill properties off the slide to the bottom. So we looked at, and part of one of the things we were asked in the mission was can we build, can we add where we are now? Do we need to go offsite with summer all of our program, what are the options? So obviously, we start with the the existing, and one of the questions that we ask um staff and everybody that we had input with is, okay, is this building safer to the township? Um Billtop House, pretty sacred, Carriage Barn, less sacred, so it doesn't have to necessarily live, but it could live. If that's the most efficient thing to do, that's a great thing to know. We asked about what other things are sacred, okay, so Billtop House, we know that's a given in the uh there's playgrounds, like a playground is sacred, because the playground has to stay where it is, not necessarily, but we have to have that type of feature on the site. Um so then when you look to the to south of the playground, left, Billtop House, one of our quick things would be like, look at that sort of half field that is over there, it's a level area. Um it's not big enough to be like a designated small field, it's a place, you know, that you can play back in the day, have to walk with your sleds across there and go down there. Um so that is an asset that we looked at on this site as completely underutilized and not maybe highest best value when you're considering the cost of, say, going offsite and taking a commercial property, maybe off the tax rolls and the implications that has. Or going to a completely virgin site and starting with development from scratch, which is expensive, particularly when considering you have sewer right here, and it like literally goes right through the properties, one of the few times I said to Jonathan, it's like about the utilities are right where you'd want it to be, normally in my world, the utilities are exactly where you wouldn't want. So so that was kind of a benefit to, so we started down the road, so next slide, please. So the first idea is like, well, what if we were to build a standalone police building over on that site, um that would be easy to secure, that would be well-connected. Uh and then to renovate the existing building uh to better serve the administration needs, particularly the meeting room. Okay, and so uh if you look on the lower right there, that has about ten thousand, just under eleven thousand square feet dedicated to police, which is is really right-sized for you all. Um and then that leaves the entire square footage here of about nine thousand suite for for admin and other public access use. And so that's not a bad play. The negative on that is to get a proper meeting room in this building has resulted originally in this, because it was the only kind of big space that didn't have columns. So we could bore out in the middle, once the police are gone, and make a bigger room there, but it would be encumbered by structure that would come through the space, or there would be structural gymnastics to remove those columns, so it's possible, but not without something. The upstairs space, which is a pretty interesting space, it's not going great, but it's got the character that AD type spaces have, you could you could actually put people up there, there's an upstairs, there's enough elevators, you can do that. That would be the same problem, there would be columns, there would be level points, so definitely a thing that could be done. Not the least cost-effective thing to do, and we'll show you the cost here and then. Option two, as we designated it, was to say, okay, we like the police option on the left, what if we expanded this building on the ground level to get a proper meeting room? And that is also imminently possible, now we studied a little more depth, because, you know, you can say that you can do that, but then you have to lay it out, and does it really work? And what we'll find out is, if you look at the sum total of the square footage, you have ten thousand seven hundred and forty of new uh one-story police, you had the existing nine thousand, well, now you have another thirty-two hundred square feet. So it becomes least efficient when you look at total square footage, and you end up with surplus square footage here. Which, if you have use for it now or in the future, you know, could could make good sense, and if not, it it's just more stuff. So the next slide just shows how you would lay that out, it's a zoom in. Um and this really would propose to build a new entrance further out into the parking area. Build a meeting room that you could get into uh immediately to your right, you plan left, and you can come through the doors. Secure reception, new restrooms out in that area to be properly sized, and then everything back here could get reworked as appropriate to flip from police use. The police being, you know, completely replaced on the other side. Um from a duration of construction, both option one and two are long durations, i.e. you stay as you are now. You build, do please, please move. So that's pretty good for that, like that's sufficient, a version that this they have. Then you have to either live here while constructing and deconstructing, move over and pack it with the police in a temporary, less help-away place, or vacate in some form or fashion to empty uh office space in the township, or obviously more trailers, which I think would be a really bad idea, there's not enough space. So this this combination of things would take at least a year and a half longer in total project duration, while you would be under construction, it would have the ramifications that, you know, are logical to extend from that. Right, so then we look at option three. And then option three is to build, and I think it kind of works because of the shape of the site, if you were to walk over there, you see the parking lot is kind of in a higher tier, and there's about you know, a six-foot drop onto that field. You could do sort of a bank barn kind of scale and maybe to certain extent vernacular, you know, silhouettes. Um building there where the admin would be at the parking level uh inaccessible from the uphill side. And then the police would be at the lower level, downhill side, daylighted, but also very secured then, so all the parking, police cars and everything would be behind that with enough room to park, you have a nice front to it um in a pretty efficient way, so that becomes from a square footage standpoint, um depending on what you do with this existing building, becomes more efficient, if you raise this completely, don't spend any more money on it, um then you have the nineteen thousand square feet that you need total, uh which is again about um just under eleven for police and just above seven um for the admin. So the two floors would don't even necessarily have to stack, which also could make it seem less boxy than, say, like a you know, pure chump, two-story building. Okay, so that that has some merit, um obviously you could stay as we are now, completely develop that and build that site. Um and move over, lock, stock and barrel, we done. And then go, okay, what do I want to do with this footprint, whether it's an indoor or outdoor? The idea that we have just really three B, but it's really re, you know, it's barely a different scheme is that would allow you to do something civic or east town community-minded there, you might then move the playground, increase its scope and what it's able to do. Um maybe leave the old stone wall and some remnants, you know, that would make it have some interesting character from the stone walls out back, but also even, you know, bringing some of these down uh and make that something sort of special. Um is three D. Okay, and that has, it's identical otherwise, except it just shows you a a potential path.
We would have to get approval to just demolish this building without replacing it?
Yes, I presume, and we were told that that was something that was not out of bounds.
You're all planning with cost for this building would be demolished from
And replace. With a like like building. Demolishing it and not replacing it may not be acceptable to me.
Okay. Um that's okay, you know, but again. Yeah, and the thinking of you'd be replacing, in my mind, over there was something of character too, but that's obviously between everybody that's had those conversations before I was here.
So we want to be respectful of the family, the
Yes, yeah, absolutely, that's why the little first question I asked is like man, I hate to say it, but I say, what are the sacred cows, what are the things that we cannot say out loud in the room, and then we know what they are, we don't say them? And that was one of my, the field and the disposition of this were the two things. Obviously, if we could put into some other community use that is suitable for it, that wouldn't even necessarily require you to demolish it. That would be certainly possible, I just don't yet know what those uses might be, indoor basketball room. You can put a wall inside, then it keeps it inside a little.
Let's not talk about
So I thought I said that, is that one of the things you shouldn't say a lot?
Yeah.
It was inside, though.
That was almost.
It was inside.
But I like this, because you're covering up where we were planning on putting the bigger paperwork, so
Oh, I did, no.
Never gonna happen.
Oh my goodness, I didn't know what that, so
That's good.
I did step into it there. So anyway, so the next thing I have is just cost analysis for each of us, so if we go to the next slide, we'll just have them in the same word. Or at least I think we will, there we go, and I don't know if you can make that even bigger, I apologize for being hard to read. Um but if you look at, there's there's a middle line called total building and site construction number. And then you look at the bottom, there's a total all-in number. And so what we are mindful about doing, and and I don't recall the specific history in the past, but is to get total to open the doors and move in cost and not just construction, but sometimes get people people caught up, but we'd like to also be able to see that, so that that middle line number is the bid day range we would expect, and again, I have to remember what these are myself. So about eight point one six to eight point seven and change. And that would be the kind of like the total of the bids from contractors, and then everything below the line is furniture, technology, security, some of the things we were just talking about, access, and then soft costs and everything to get it built. Give the permits, give the inspections and all that kind of thing, that leads you to a a total cost of ten point three all round up uh to about ten point two all, or eleven point two also rounding up, so that's option one, apologies.
And then one quick, one quick question, is five percent a reasonable group?
If you feel confident that what we're building is fairly straightforward, which a township administration and police facility on an essentially greenfield site is pretty uh straightforward. Five percent's fine, I mean, ten percent's a little more conservative, but I I I'm not.
And and I will say, we captured more than that in our high-low range, so when you, if you look, I I should have explained this, when I said, you know, ten point this, the basically, our opinion based on, and this is all buildings that have been built in Pennsylvania, about half of which we designed, and the other half is just data that we grabbed, so public, multi-prime, prevailing wage, township-type buildings. Our opinion is it won't it won't cost less than the low number. And there's no reason unless we ran into, you know, something I won't even say aloud on the high side, that it would it would be higher than that, so that captures a certain amount of contingency, and then we'd be conservative.
Now, have the bids come in for construction costs for the last year, let's say, I I mean, it was really crazy, like twenty-two, twenty-three, even going into twenty-four. Has it at least calmed down in terms of like the price spikes, the subcontractors and everything? Just because I'm not familiar with with, we just tally world construction, um it seems like it's a little more slower growth at this point, I'm just curious if you're
We have been delighted to see consistently now, for a while, you could barely maybe get one bid that was in the budget because of the escalation that you could hardly keep up with.
Or you'd get bids that were fifty percent higher just because they could.
Now we're getting four in five that are equal to or below the number that we're predicting here, which is great, you know, and and again, not we're we're not enough that we're willing to deflate back yet. That happened one time in my career, where we would actually, and then went backwards, because the economy was so bad, probably on or about.
Oh, nine?
So, uh yeah, some collapse and then the economy, uh and we actually had deflation because people were just desperate to have work, and it was a good time to buy, if you were bothered. So so anyway, so that is an option one, so just again, ten point three to eleven point two. Um all in. So go to the next slide? Or did you already?
Option two.
So you'll see that this one, option two, is the one that had, uh you know, it it gets bigger, so the cost um goes up with that, and that is really, you can almost point all of it to the extra square footage that comes with the addition to this building while at the same time you're building the same square footage as police, so you'll see that's really nine point eight, what you call it, ten to ten-seven on construction, and then twelve to thirteen-five on the all-in, and that's sort of our, I believe, our worst case um for that. And then option three and three A sort of look a lot alike, and they're a little bit less, so even though you're getting all-new building, it's a little bit less because it's a more efficient, oh, and this, what that does not count, we didn't count moving costs or double move for some of those schemes, and we didn't really add anything in for the cost of time, meaning the shorter duration, so if you were really serious, you might actually have carried that. I think we did carry that, so I apologize, in option two, where we have the extra duration, we carried a higher cost in it to absorb the fact that you would be under construction for long.
The thing that we discussed that we thought was missing in three A was the the, let's say, capex or maintenance costs for this building right here, where if we're gonna keep this building, we're gonna turn it into something. Regardless of if we're gonna reconfigure it or whatever, just to keep the building, to do a roof or other maintenance, um I didn't know if that was captured in here, so I think that we were discussing if that was not in here, and maybe it's another half a million or something.
So in option two.
Option two was, yeah, I'm talking three A, sorry.
Oh, we did a site renovation?
No, in in three A, three B is the playground, three A is
Three A, you're correct, we didn't, we just kind of got mothballed as it advanced.
I I take this to be the point where I move in, you're doing that stuff beyond that, the the costs of
Yes, right.
Two buildings.
Right, but even if we didn't make a decision on what to do with this facility here, like you're gonna have to replace the roof, you're gonna have to
But actually, when we discussed it, it was uh it was capital costs associated with preserving this building for another civic use. Which was mostly windows, roof, and ABC.
Yeah.
And the number that at the session was somewhere around a half a million dollars, so it doesn't change to any orientation of your decision-making, when you get to a later point, you'll want to have that refund.
And and I'm not saying, you know, uh let's capture the cost of turning this into a rec center and refurb, you know, whatever that price is, that's fine keeping that out, but I think adding that in there, at least mentally, so that we can make a decision on what we feel comfortable with, I think makes sense for for this.
And that, yes, I think that's led at the bottom of the slide, what happens to the prior building, because that was a question we had. Um so if you would want us to alter that to just say allow, put an allowance in, so you don't forget about the money, that, I mean, the easy enough for us. All right, so then three D is really three A plus our soon cost to develop um more fully the the site as an outdoor uh space for you, and I don't know, could we say work, art prep? Yeah, it's all covered, the old part demolished, landscape market, so there's about a billion, almost two million in there um that we can do properly. Yes. Yeah. That would be in there to to make sure the whole site, like we erase the old one, put in a new one, make it all look finished and done. Uh so that will get you to twelve point two all-in. Next to eleven point, I'm thirteen point two, twelve to thirteen point two against capital, like the the bid day cost of just under ten to Okay. So while you're digesting that, uh the path forward, because obviously this is this is high level, feel good about the square footages, feel good about the numbers. Um would be then to go into design, and then there would be many, many bites of the apple for everybody that needed um to be in that For everybody that needed, um, to be in that, you know, would include. Really diving into the core values and how we want to address sustainability, you know, integrate those things. Um, as well as the, you know, working with the police to like lock down, they'll pun intended, but I guess I'll say the pump's intended. Uh, that facility you made it just right for them, admin just right then, public spaces right for them. And a holistic, you know, architecture that would add value to the community.
So Marty, what do you need from us today? Do you need us to decide on an option or get you? To the next level where you can proceed with design?
Yeah, I mean, if you were to. Say we feel best about. This particular option or these two options, uh, if you weren't sure. And, and said, would you then prepare, you know, the next stage contract proposal to advance that? Um, it's a good time to talk about the time. So if you advance this, let's say, since this is December. Um, it would be very feasible to have everything teed up in twenty-six. For a spring twenty-seven start. And depending on land development, you could bid in twenty-six if we got through. You know, all the M D S. Usually what will happen is the land development will take over the schedule. And if it goes really well. Cause we, we can fit the architecture usually in that. This will be disturbing, certainly more than an acre. So. You know, it'll, it'll go through that process, which is normal. Um, but that usually takes. Just under a year. So if that's nine months, the architecture during nine months, you could bid in. Say November one of twenty-six. With the idea that their notice to proceed would be in the new year twenty-seven, and that's also normal and gives you time to line up your ducks. Uh, worst case, it would be bid probably in. January and you'd still start. Spring of twenty-seven. Um, and then obviously. If you don't, you know, every day's a day, however that, um. You know, so that's. It's best I can.
So that's online, construction completion would be sometime between the end of twenty-seven and the end of twenty-eight? So depending on the options.
If we started in the spring of twenty-seven. So the one thing I will say that has changed. Um, and it started changing before the COVID thing is the, the amount of time it takes to build stuff is just longer. Like we used to be able to build. Almost anything in a year and now we almost can't build anything in a year. So I would go eighteen months for construction would be safe. With the hope that maybe you get it in fifteen, but you don't tell people fifteen and find out it's eighteen just because it.
And options three were, were the ones who are closer to fifteen potential.
Yeah, and then if you go with one of the options two, you probably add a year of that because you can't really start here until you get. At least the police out.
And then, uh, for the members that weren't, that aren't. At the table tonight, they did ask whether three A, three B mattered for your decision tonight and it, it doesn't as well.
Honestly, it does not.
So you have several months, if you, uh, if the consensus was three A, three D. You can move forward with just that general direction and then take time to decide what happens with this site. After, you know, they still need to have a direction at some point, but you do a.
Well, part of the design would be the discernment of what to do. Like you've worked on that, like.
So I wouldn't want to, I don't think it would be pretty to include your PSA if you haven't decided between one, two or three. But I don't think you need to wait if you decide three is. What you want. Martin could have a PSA to you next month and you could start the design in January. So. You're minding the budget that you approved.
So Eric and I were chosen, uh, a month ago to evaluate the options. We had a meeting, uh, we looked at the costs, similar to, to the presentation that we had tonight. Um, Marty, great job, by the way. This was fantastic.
Thank you.
Um, we looked at all the options. I thought the first one was more of a non-starter in the context of. We don't have the meeting room space. That's one of the major. Reasons for needing a new facility, like granted, police. Staff, everyone's all, you know, tight and cozy. Um, the meeting room for the public is essential in my opinion. So I cast that aside as not viable. Option two is really where it starts for me. Um, there's disadvantages for that one, like you said, in the timeline, um, and then the reconfiguration. Uh, it's feasible, it meets, um, requirements, but I think there's disadvantage to it. It's also the most expensive one. But it is viable. So options two, three A and three B are the three that really Eric and I were kind of. Coming in on in terms of making a decision. Um, they're all within spitting distance of the same cost. Like if you look like. You know, the high estimates for the cheapest one is, you know, twelve. Seven or something like that. If you add in the. Four or five hundred thousand dollars in costs that we expected for building, building for option three A. Um, so they're all like within a million, million ahead of each other. So I don't think cost is the largest driver, which one we, we should choose for this one. Overall, Eric and I were thinking, especially because of taking advantage of a new greenfield site construction, it'd be a lot faster. It was really between three A and three B. I favored three B because as you read last meeting, park, like I already wanted to add in a park. redoing the, you know, stuff that's just old over here. Throw a couple hundred thousand dollars into it. It's already kind of built into option three B. I loved it. Um, Eric, uh, liked the idea of three A, so we kind of just disagreed with that. Um, I know you had expressed before wanting either like a rec center or a senior center. This gives an opportunity to have that with the current facility.
Um, I mean, my, I love three A. I, I think we should go ahead. You know, I would sign on the bottom line today. Um, I think we should defer the decision about. Three B until later.
Like, I like three A, three B, where they were used.
And that's really what Eric and I landed on was it sounded like we didn't have to make a decision tonight between the two. Um, it sounds like we trended towards pretty quickly, those two was the option. Um, so I'm comfortable moving forward with saying it's either three A or three B. We need to have more discussions and figure out exactly what we want to do. My request would be, what I don't want to do is say it's three A. And we just go forward with this nebulous building that we don't know what we're doing with. If we're doing three A, I would like us to decide it's going to be a rec center. Or it's going to be a senior, whatever it is.
Combinations.
We should know what it is and how much we want to spend on reconfiguring it and build that into the budget. I understand there's budget, there's target for what we're doing here. But us in terms of what we want to spend and do this, I don't want it to just be this nebulous thing that we preserve for the future and don't know what we're doing with it. I'd much rather it be a park.
It's ready, that's the, anyway, that, that this building could use as some sort of annex to the library.
He was just thinking the same thing.
It didn't need so much space, maybe there's.
Never thought about two suit, two locations, Susan, only because of staff.
Right, my next step is a problem.
But, but it's certainly in. I think it has to be on the table because we are embarking on a needs assessment anyway. To know what we could or should do to the current building. So once we have the needs.
I mean, there's some things that happen in the library that could happen here.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Once we know it's assessment of what isn't fitting there, maybe that's the time to have that discussion.
They're also just not that close to each other. Like if they were like, you know, within walking distance of each other, they're.
Yeah, I mean, you couldn't move the school kids to do anything over here, but you could move people doing the tactics. But I see that as an advantage, like.
Well, you could do story time and stuff, you know. I'm, I, for different dozen with two. I don't, I don't know if there's advantages or disadvantages, but.
Indoor space for the summer. Yeah, but why would we hand them those two up? Okay, so.
So, so let's go with three A.
Yeah, yeah. So it sounds then what we'll do is we'll work with Martin for a PSA around three. And if. Wait, when you vote on it, you say, hey, we changed our mind. We like one who said, then the project gets delayed by a month and Martin has to redo the PSA. But we'll, uh. We'll work with you for that. We'll look to bring that back in January, you know, later than January. And Sue and I have to meet with the banker. And we gotta look at, uh. Because you might go on a pretty tight schedule to make this decision if you want to, uh. You're, you're going to borrow money for the E M A. And that's going to start tomorrow. You know, we're going to initiate that tomorrow because you approved it tonight. Uh, it'll take a couple of months to work its way through to you. Uh, this will require borrowing. This is. Three or four months behind. We're going to talk to the banker about, hey, what can you combine them? That might give you a. Sort of a rock solid date circa May. You gotta wrap all this up by May because we're looking to initiate the borrowing. You know, no later than May kind of thing. So we'll, we'll be, we'll work with the banker on that.
Another question about this. I love the idea that the police sent direct access to the new town roads. I think that's standard, that's the thing. We know that that's feasible, but when I run to. Then the auditions.
Uh, we think as a, uh, special access only.
Yeah, so that's a design that we feel comfortable.
I, I did not want to lose that.
So, yes, it came up when we were discussing it and it was determined that's a design consideration. So. At a minimum, the police, like there's some safety aspect to it. Uh, how it fits in best. You'll get some resistance most likely because, uh. People like they don't like, they, they feel like. Uh, that idea of moving to the, to the nuisance. I was there and the, the driveway wasn't, you can't put the driveway there. So. That'll be a design. Phase consideration. It, uh, represented as a emergency access at this point.
We penciled in three additional access points, knowing that we're not going to build, we presumably won't be building four access points for the new building. So there's, there's, there's superfluous driveways. To choose from.
One of the things we're trying to do is not. Get so deep into the design, one particular, it takes, you know, years.
This is one of the reasons for not wanting to stay here, wanting to move. Is the police, I was here one day and the police could not get out because of the park, the parking lot that. For all I wrote is, so to me, this is a critical piece of this.
Well, so that's the sort of thing in land development, that comes up, there'll be a recommendation from the experts and from the staff and the police. And it'll work its way through land development and it can't happen without you. So you'll get to decide ultimately.
So, so Don, the one thing I would add with your permission is when we do this next agreement, we just can include. A development study phase that's going on simultaneous to developing the new building. To discern, to work with all stakeholders with what to do with this. Uh, and it can just happen.
Also, so we'll, we heard what you want. We'll work with Martin to get the PSA that reflects that.
Uh, that's perfect. The last thing that I just wanted to add for our board's benefit was from the previous studies that we had done a few years ago. Um, the total amount was, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three million, north of twenty million dollars that we had landed on. And that was. Not tenable from, from our standpoint. We didn't have the funding, we didn't have a realistic way to fund it. Um, this, I mean, even on the most expensive end, we're at thirteen and change million dollars. I mean, it's a. Ten million dollars cheaper than what we were looking at a few years ago. So I think this is a. This is a huge win. It's still a lot of money to spend. Don't get me wrong, it's not free. Um, but this is a vastly more reasonable building. We get a fully functional building, a modern space. Great location, um, and, uh, spent a lot less money doing it. I think it's a, it's a. Good way that, it's a prudent way to spend the township money.
It seems to me like it's the overlap of the circle. I watched a decent number of those meetings. And it has key attributes that those meetings required. I think it. Overlaps the circles, I think it does what you, what you all wanted it to.
Yeah. Very happy.
So for your initial direction, and so you can hear. Public comment. Is the motion to move forward conceptually is. With both option three A and three B. Subject to additional input from the architect staff. And all of you.
So moved. Any comments? Any public comment?
One observation, I think it's a great idea. And I know you're between A and B. I'm not sure you'd have to give up both playgrounds if you move. And the others, you have to be considerate of what's going on and make a seatbelt and the bathrooms over there will not be that far from. The new one. But I think it looks great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Excellent. Any other public comment? All, right, you have the ball in favor?
I.
I. Okay.
Great job, Marty.
Well, thank you. Yeah, thank you. It's been a pleasure working with your team and, um, look forward to being back and seeing you work. Next year and, um. You know, I look forward to. And for those who don't recall, as a resident of the town, so. Look forward to keeping it on the straight and narrow and it will be molded with cross checks. Throughout that, so that we don't. End up, you know, making the. The value virtues for A and B.
Right. One piece of advice, underground, there's, there's rocks. Yes, to make sure that's included in the cost.
Okay.
We will, we will.
We just built a firehouse or together we all built a firehouse and that was an added cost.
That was mine.
Michael didn't have a lot of patience with, uh, hey, why didn't you, why didn't somebody figure that one out before you break them?
We'll, we'll punch lots of little holes out there to see what, how far the rock is down, but. Somebody already leveled it. That's definitely not natural. So that's encouraging.
But by leveling it, don't they just scrape the topsoil, make the rocks more.
Right down where we wanted them. As long as we don't want a basement, we don't want a basement. So that's, that's good.
Well, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will. Take my lead, but I thank you for listening.
Good to see you.
Thank you for on dying. We're in the providing supervisor compensation.
And if the board would like this, um, you've got a memo in your packet, uh, this was the topic of board discussion. Prior meeting. Um, so the. Taste away in terms of the drafting exercise from the prior meeting was. Um, we know the statutory requirement. That when you increase or create compensation. It cannot apply to any supervisor during their sitting term of office. Um, we've got one. Board member, uh, turning it over to a new term of office. Next year. And then you've got, um, two more board members. In two years essentially, and then two more in four years. I think the direction of the board would be to wait. Until. All of you finish your existing term. In other words, there's not a rolling implementation of the salary. Um, and so for that reason, the draft, um, would make the ordinance. Um, effective immediately, um, if you have us advertise it. Um, and you would act on it on December fifteenth. Effective immediately, meaning the ordinance is in place. However, um, the compensation would not actually be paid. Until January seven, twenty thirty, which would be the reorganization of this board. After the expiration of every sitting member's term. So even if you were to act today, it's really, uh, four years away. Uh, but if we get it on the books and then it's sort of a, a neutral item. Um, it does not benefit, uh, anybody individually with their.
Yeah, I think it's the right thing to do. I mean, we've talked about this every year since at least I joined the board and it's really. I mean, it's a stipend for all intents and purposes. I mean, I can't tell you how much I've had to get a babysitter to watch one or two or at this point, three kids. Uh, because I had a meeting, my wife's got softball or whatever it is. Um, you know, I think it funds things like that. It allows people who have busy lives. Have obligations already. It allows them to potentially run for office and have a role like ours. So. I'd like it to not just be a role for the independently wealthy and retiree community. I'd rather it be for anybody who has a desire to. Kind of volunteer and serve. So I think this helps accomplish that. It's an obligation, uh, you know, in accordance with Pennsylvania. Law, state law, uh, so I think it's, it's the right thing to do. And we don't benefit from it. So it's not like we're taxing people and we're getting money here. It takes effect after we're gone. So I, I think it's, it's the right thing to do.
Unless you run for reelection and, and you're reelected, but, uh, but any supervisor entering a new term, it'd be in twenty thirty. Everybody is.
So, um.
And if, so if you're ready to act, um, subject to public comment, the motion would be to advertise the ordinance for action on December.
So moved.
Second. Any comments? Any public comment?
I just have one, Michael, and it's on the date, not on the topic at all. Wouldn't it be twenty thirty-two based on a six-year term of Michael?
No, because, um.
He's voting for his next term to start.
Correct. So, um, the advertisement and the action would be under this current term. His next term starts in January. So he would. If it was a plain vanilla ordinance, he would be available, um, to have it in January.
Yeah.
But per the ordinance, uh, even he would have to wait four years.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor?
I.
I. Motion passes.
We will get it advertised.
Thank you. So that's all of the board motions and departmental reports. Does anybody have any questions about the manager for board, assistant manager, finance? Do you have any? Um, thing about timely?
Respond, any questions?
If hearing that, we can move on to regular business. Which is the twenty twenty-five.
Yes, we're talking a little bit about this in, uh, in our. We're, we're working to make this go faster than it's gone in the past. And we were under the, we were hoping that we'd go faster in twenty twenty-five, uh. The current auditors having difficulty meeting deadlines and schedules. And. We're interpreting what they, what you said, that they cannot proceed in a timely manner in twenty-five. So, uh. We think you need a new auditor. Uh, we provide solutions, not problems. So we'll just tell you, hey, you need a new auditor. We, uh, talked to Mary, who was your previous auditor, also one of the, uh. As part of the ECAT project, we interviewed auditors. So we had some. Familiarity with them through that process. We talked to them relatively quickly about their capability to move quickly. Uh, they are available, willing and they can move quickly. Uh, you will point the auditor at reorg. So you'll, you'll appoint an auditor at reorg. Um, our advice is that you will point mainly, we're not in a, we don't think you're in a position to. Issue RFPs evaluably. Issue R F Ps evaluating, you know, we we need this to move quickly. Uh we've got a rate from the delay that we've had in all of these. So uh there's a next year, you couldn't uh be sure if accused for it. But uh given the short notice of this. Our thought is it's best to proceed with appointing mainly at the uh at the reorg meeting. That said, it's your decision. Uh you have the deciding.
If we were to appoint them, what is the timeline for getting an audit? Do we know? Do they?
And what they think they can start immediately and they can finish on the regular schedule, which means. You know, Aprilish kind of finish.
I that was a specific question. So uh Dale Odenhour is the principal of the V S I war account. I've worked extensively with Dale over the last fifteen years through three other agencies. Uh he has a great team underneath him. He said February is actually a perfect time of year for them. Uh it's a, it is a gap that they have, uh so they would be able to operate on. Basically, if we're ready to go, we'd be able to start engagement now. They've started with over. Uh documents getting prepped. I know that the twenty twenty four isn't in final days yet, but. They would look to deliver this in that uh draft form, you know, the April, May, final one, June and be done with it. Uh as well as some additional work that, you know, they have something that we're looking to work on as well. So. I have a lot of faith in this agency. I've worked with them extensively and they will uh be a good partner on this project.
And so we had worked with them in before that and your experience with them was very timely.
Correct. And before, when we worked with them and they came out in the beginning to middle of that, he's pretty, unlike John, he said. You have, you think I've done.
So as part of part of our, you know, like the re- the reason we're presenting that is because our job is to bring solutions to you, not brownings. So that's why, part of why we see that as the solution.
Are you guys comfortable with this or do you want to go out to our?
No, no, because they're happy with them. I'm happy.
And it's professional service, so the board has discretion to choose and move forward with who you want, how you want. So you don't have to do an R F Q or a formal process. I'd also say that um your current auditor, you're not alone. Um there are dozens of municipalities in Chester County. Uh going through the same thing and then your current auditor has been involved in a merger process and um.
Well, is that what?
Yeah, and I think uh it's systemic, so I don't. As far as I can tell, it doesn't have anything to do with East Town. It has to do with their larger business model.
So we should jump quick, so we and we don't get them.
And we had to break, we you can't, you can't spend four more months digging it so that you're starting the auditing, uh like we've. We've been trying to break you from this delay and we thought we had broken you from the delay, but now you're not broken from the delay. So. You know, we're bringing our bias to it. Our bias is you have this entity that you've worked with in the past that we have professional comfort with. Uh that can start immediately and it's sort of like the uh two birds in the hand is worth one in the bush kind of thing. So. Uh that my bias is important to us to break you from this delay that is, as Andy said, not. The source of anger here.
And Michael, to your point of one of the reasons why we brought this up to you now instead of waiting until January was we'd like to. Give them some level of go ahead because everybody's wanting to be looking to date them.
Alright. So let me present my background and hesitation. Um one is we had to chose to switch. It didn't actually take long. We did it like in January, we used to have to do, you know, but that worked well. Um two is that I I haven't. It's great that you're bringing solutions to us, right? But the auditor is a special case, right? But the auditor should be reporting to the board. And he is the the board's eyes and stuff, having management bring the order to us is. And I'm not saying anything negative. I'm just saying that having the management bring the auditor. The is is generally not considered a good good idea, I don't think. Um. I mean, so I don't think that we have much of a choice. I think, you know, like you said, Sue, they they've done a good job personally in the past. We didn't change them because they were doing a bad job. We changed them because we have them for a long time. And it's good to have a new auditor.
And I feel like we've done pretty good recently with getting RFQs, R P's out there for professional services kind of on a timeline. I think we've done well with that. Um something like this comes up, I'm probably making an exception and saying, I think we should do this.
Then we could decide to go with RFQ for next year. It's only a one year.
Right. And if so, the decision to make to for RF two needs to be a. You know, like a certain June decision, so that the decision is made in the fall, so that you're starting in which are not. You know, start the decision fall, so.
Right. We also have three elected auditors. Does that have any impact on this?
No. No, by statute, once, once you choose a professional auditor, which you did years ago. And you've got a resolution that has that in place going forward, no matter who the professional auditor is. There's really, although your elected auditors get elected, there is literally nothing for them to do. If you had a municipality where one of the elected supervisors were, say, the roadmaster, which you see in more rural townships. And you cannot pick your own compensation for a job. The elected auditors would do that. But in East Town, there's literally no funding.
Yeah.
Do we have a roadmaster? Thank you. Uh in in a denser suburban professionalized community, you've got um public works.
There.
And the and the staff function.
We have done.
What's up with works? So all that said, I uh we need a motion, right?
Uh we need a motion or is it just uh there'll be a formal appointment at reorg? Yeah, I think per your memo, there's no action on the agenda. So I I think it's. It's guidance that that the staff is moving forward to arrange the engagement that you'll approve. And we're gonna start mainly, like they want to start gathering data now. We're gonna start them gathering. So. Great. Well, what we would have done with the predecessor, she had to, you know, we live at the start. Either in that one's again now, so we'll initiate that with mainly. We'll tell them just that pension is uh it'll be a reorg appointment in uh January.
Great.
Good.
Okay. All of them, that's it.
Okay.
Uh next, public comment, any public comment?
Thank you, Michael. Betsy Fadden here for the library. Thank you for your support, capital and operating. And to a point that was raised earlier tonight, Andy, when you summarized the millage and the referendum. Threshold that was instituted many, many, many years ago. Is there anything we need to memorialize to indicate that that is not the level of funding that's expected now? That you all are complimenting it with the E I two.
Yeah, I think um I think there has been enough in the in the public packets.
Yeah.
That it's already memorialized essentially.
Okay, thank you. But thank you again for twenty twenty six.
And and I want to make a comment about our public library. We um. I think we're the the largest contributor to our public library outside of the Stradeford in Chester County. And I'm really proud of that. I think we have a great library, a fantastic library. And I think I think our township, our people supporting it is a is a wonderful thing.
The library is looking at expansion because there's so much overwhelming demand for their services. It's it's a great story.
And I think they are very good stewards of your allocation and that's everything I've observed. So thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Um even there are meetings scheduled on the uh the on the township website. Uh the next, tomorrow night is planning commission and then this all.
Cancel.
That's been canceled. Yeah, so there's not the planning commission. You can go on the website and find that. I do want to point out two special events. One is the annual Berlin Tree Lightning Celebration will be held December seventh, uh Sunday at five thirty at the Berlin train sta- train station. And historic Limbore's annual candlelight and caroling would be held on December fourteenth at two P M. We are adjourned. Okay, go ahead. Motion.
Motion.
We are very. Thank you, everybody.